Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the November 5th School Committee meeting to order, and the first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you. And our first order of business tonight will be a recognition of Wapo High School Student Council. Dr. Goff?
Yes, Mrs. McManon and members of the Wapo High School Student Council are present tonight, and the Wapo High School Student Council run many, many programs and fundraisers and events all year long, and they also participate in a great deal of community service. So Student Council, you also recently participated in the regional conference and hosted the C-Mask, which was greatly appreciated. I don't know if you're gonna say a few words about that, so I don't want to steal your thunder, but the students are going to discuss any events today and answer any questions the school committee may have.
Well, come on up. We're not in our usual setting. But what I would suggest is if you guys come up, maybe stand there, you can get on TV, but pick up the microphone. That might be the smartest thing to do. In order for the vast listening audience to hear, you need to use the microphone. No? No?
Okay.
Okay.
Just stand by the microphone.
Should I, like?
Do you want to introduce yourselves to the school committee and say what your opportunities have?
Should I go this way?
Sure, and then turn around, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Hi, I'm Liam Crowley. I'm Assistant Treasurer on E-Board for the Student Council.
Welcome. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea Wilburn. I'm President of Student Council.
Hi, I'm Sarah St. George, and I'm Vice President of Student Council.
Hi, I'm Abby Duffy, and I'm the Secretary.
Hello, I'm Kevin McLaney, and I'm the President of the Junior Class.
So, and I'm Ms. Mac, Carrie McManaman, Advisor. I don't know if you guys have questions or anything, we can loudly take them, hopefully. We just finished our annual yard cleanup where we did rake 40-plus homes.
15 homes?
Yeah.
Fifty-three.
Yeah, 53 homes. Over 600 leaves, bags of leaves filled. So that was our fundraiser. It got a lot of good press on, what is it, Wapo?
Wapo recommends that these communities are blew up.
Yes. They were very impressed with how polite and positive our students were, which was great for me to see. We are right now prepping for our annual pep rally and powder puff game on November 27th. That is in conjunction with Pride Day here at the high school. We will also be hosting for the first time on that Pride Day, a town hall for the students here at Wapo High to have an open dialogue with administration and teachers. We will be hosting the Massachusetts Association of Student Council's Special Olympics Bocce Tournament on Saturday, January 11th. And as soon as we're done with pep rally, we'll be working with administration and the Community Service Club to prep and execute the first School Service Day for the entire high school on Friday, April 17th. And we are looking for community partners and community sponsors to help because we know, like, Service Day is gonna be a huge undertaking, and we want it to go well. So we'll be soliciting for community projects and partners and sponsors.
Are there people on the committee that want to start with questions? Are there any things that you students want us to know? You put a lot of effort into this, and I know the whole idea of working with the staff members, but I think other students too, who are working on the Pride Initiative is an important one. We would love to hear about it because we don't hear enough sometimes. So if you've got anything that you can share with us, we'd love to hear it.
So I think that Pride was like a good establishment last year. I think you're like, they kind of got the ball rolling. But I think to make it effective, in my opinion, needs to be a lot of action-based, like, learning and experiences that are gonna make kids really change their character. Like, obviously having people talk to us about it and posters do get those ideas in our head, but I think practicing those five core values is what's gonna make it stick. So I think that planning that Pride Day and having that student town hall will really help us, like, drive, like, have a connection with other students outside the Student Council and faculty within the school. And then I think that that Service Day is, again, a great way to execute all five of those core values and the limited practice instead of just keeping it with a discussion-based program.
I don't know. I just feel like, I feel like Pride's going pretty good. I mean, most of the teachers are definitely supporting that, especially on Fridays when they all wear their Pride shirts. Like, yeah, like, I'm just saying. I've definitely been seeing more product. It's getting handed out, like, just teachers recognizing, like, I don't know, students doing, like, good things helping other students. The more the teachers get into it, the more the students will.
And I think Andrea is right. I think that you, that an effort like that can't be just adult-driven.
Yeah.
You have to really get student leaders from all sorts of different groups, you know? Not just one grade, not just one sort of stereotype of student, but the more, the more diversity you get, the better off you're gonna get results. But I think it's the only way to affect the school culture. So it sounds like you're onto something. That's good. That's great. I love the fact that you guys also invest yourselves in becoming student leaders and try to learn leadership skills. Can anybody talk a little bit about how you've done that over the, I'm assuming most of you guys are upperclassmen? Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, we all are.
Okay.
Well, throughout Student Council, like, starting usually your sophomore year, we all start chairing, like, different events. And it's not just like the executive board, like, the people that you see here. We try to incorporate a lot of, like, lowerclassmen too. Like, I know we have, like, a teacher dinner soon, and we have one of our, like, sophomores that we see becoming a really, like, strong leader. We have her chairing that instead of having one of us doing that. And obviously, we're there for guidance, and we have the upperclassmen constantly helping the lowerclassmen just to, like, lead them and give them some guidance. But we try to incorporate everyone in Student Council and give everyone a chance to show their leadership skills and, like, develop them and foster them throughout our four years.
I think that opportunities definitely come with kids who are willing to invest their time and don't just do the burn-in. Then we definitely, like, see that, like, oh, they're fresh themselves. Like, oh, we can do a bigger job. They can, like, we should really get them involved and show them. And I think also we have a lot of kids who end up shadowing, like, our big events so that they can eventually chair it once people graduate or don't want to share it anymore. They kind of pass on to kids gradually.
I remember a couple of years ago, rather than a student's speech at graduation, the valedictorian and salutatorian did, like, an audio montage where they interviewed everybody in the class to say, they asked them a few basic questions, but one of them was something about what would, what advice would you give to younger classmen? And a number of kids were saying, you know, "Don't be afraid to get involved. Go a little bit outside your comfort zone. Meet some people that you've never met before." And I think that the kind of leadership that you're talking about sort of encourages that. I think that's important. People will tell you how fast the high school years go by, and it's even worse when you get to college. It just flies. So, you know, you want to take advantage of those opportunities. Yes.
I just wanted to thank you again for hosting the Southeastern Mass Student Council. I've never been, and I was blown away. I didn't realize that, like, over 600 students.
That's a lot.
It was, and I wish I could always be greeted like that and greet every friend. It was really, it was unbelievable. The energy was amazing. Thank you, because I know that was a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of effort to host that. You know, we put Wapo in a great light, and we did us proud. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? I would just say, Ms. Mac, thank you. You're amazing. I like the fact that, you know, this year is different from last year, is different from the year before, and that's gotta be, I mean, I'm sure you rely on your student leaders to make that happen too, but you bring some great energy, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item we have is a Wapo High field trip to Rome, Italy in April of 2020. Mr. Bacca?
Hey there. Uh, where should I just?
I think right at the end of that table is good, yeah.
Okay. So this would be a trip, a nine-day trip, as we've done in the past over April vacation. It would be about 12 students and two chaperones, myself, and most likely either Laura Kay or John McCloskey from Latin Department. But it is a trip that's focused entirely on Rome, that kind of go into, you know, a fair number of the sites all around there, with a couple of day trips out to Hadrian's Villa and Herculaneum and such. And, you know, the group that runs it is a nonprofit that's very focused on the educational aspect of the trip. When we go to the sites, there are specific readings for the students to do, sometimes in Latin, sometimes in English, depending on their skill level. But just so that, you know, while they're actually at the sites, they're also reading, you know, bits of ancient literature that tie into those places. So reading some of Marshall's poems about the Colosseum while you're at the Colosseum, or reading about, you know, Marcus Manlius and the geese and the Capitoline Hill while you're on the Capitoline Hill. So it's very nice to kind of have the sites to use as a sort of classroom where you're, you know, doing readings, just as you wouldn't, you know, a physical classroom, like, on the site so they can see more or less, you know, what someone in antiquity would have seen or get a better sense of that. You know, other than that, the accommodations are always very comfortable, you know? Excellent choice of restaurants, or, you know, they're usually established by the company. And the trip runs 3,500 per student, which I think is on the lower end of a lot of the trips and options I've seen for an equivalent length and, you know, being sort of all-inclusive. Again, it's a nonprofit company, so they tend to keep the prices down as much as possible because there are a lot of middlemen in there.
So do you have somebody from the company assigned to your group?
Yes, so there is a teaching assistant that is attached to you, who's someone who usually just finished up their bachelor degree, bachelor's degree in classics, who's doing a year or two there to kind of lead some groups around. So it's someone who has very strong classical background, usually someone who is fluent in Latin, if that is something you want to do more spoken activities while you're there, and also who's fluent in Italian as well, can easily act as a translator if need be. And they, you know, last time we went, they were super helpful. You know, we did have a student who had some serious food allergies, and she was very good about translating a little card for him to carry around that he could bring to restaurants so that they would know what not to serve him.
Perfect. Good. Are there questions for Mr. Bacca?
Yes. Is it still open, or have you?
It is still open, yeah. So we're now making that push to bring in the last people out.
Okay. Great, great. And does it, I'm sure you give priority to kids who are taking Latin, is it?
We do, but I, this year I have sort of opened it up that if there are students who are just interested, who would like to go, that they're welcome to come along as well. They still have to do the readings, the same as everyone else, but if they are interested, they can come along.
Okay, great. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip to Rome, Italy from April 18th, 2020 to the April 26th.
We have a motion by Mrs. Syrek, the second by Mrs. Muciini. Any further discussion? All those in favor? opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you, and thanks for doing it.
Thank you for hearing me down this evening. Take care.
Okay, so that gets us to our next item, which is the report of 2019 MCAS scores.
Right. Assistant Superintendent Bill Han will give an overview to the school committee and community regarding the 2019 MCAS test.
Be as loud as possible, so if I get a, if you'll get your mic being picked up.
Okay.
And you all have the report. Okay, I'll give you a copy so you can see, because some of these numbers are gonna be a little tough to see on the actual PowerPoint. I thought to start, I might start with this quote, which is really important to me, and that is, like, Carol's wife is a leader, educational leader, behind the movement of growth mindset. But test scores and measures of achievement tell you where a student is, but they don't tell you where a student ended up. And I think it might be obvious that I'm starting with this quote as we discuss MCAS, but I just think it's important that while these, while these, while this data is incredibly important for us to make decisions as a district in areas that we do well and things that we can do better, we are talking about students, and so we are firm believers in all of our students. This is a number that tells us where our students are now, but we're excited by how much our students can contribute to grow. And I know as a parent who gets MCAS scores, that's a conversation I have with my own daughter. And it's also an announcement I used to make as a principal. I would tell students that we want them to do their best, we want them to take this assessment very seriously, but this single assessment will never define our students alone. It is just a part, like, beautiful, complex way that we look at all of our kids. And I think our strategic plan represents that, and I thought it's a good way to kind of start our discussion around MCAS. So because while we're in our third year, for most of our students in the next generation MCAS, is, next generation was brand-new to our 10th grade students this year. So I thought at least one more year, we would do a crick review, a smaller view of the difference between the legacy and the next generation MCAS. As you can read from the slide, the next generation MCAS focuses on students' critical thinking abilities, application knowledge, and ability to make connections between reading and writing. And I have many examples that will bring this, bring this bullet point a little bit more to life, so you can actually see it in the questions that I'll show you tonight. It is virtually 100% computer-based. Paper-based is an option for some students, but it's not the way that it was in the past where school districts could decide are we gonna be all paper or all computer? We are all computer-based across the state, and the paper is just for a few students. It is now 3 to 10 full for ELA and math assessments, science, technology, and engineering for fifth and eighth grade, and then the high school moving for the sciences in the 20 to 21. This is just a difference in the way that MCAS achievement levels are reported. If you remember correctly, if you remember, it used to be advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and warning. And so that has changed to the state believes better emphasizes where students are at, and that's exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. And as you see from this next slide, the state highly recommends that, well, the MCAS performance levels and scale scores, excuse me, shows student progress, and then the SGP. I'm gonna talk about these in a second. Before I do, the state highly recommends that you do not compare advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and warning to the new standards of exceeding, meeting, partially meeting, and not meeting expectations. And I'll talk about that in a little bit more in a second. Now back to this slide, excuse me. MCAS performance levels and scale scores answer how much a student achieved compared to the state grade-level standards. And then the SGP says how much has this student achieved over the previous year compared to his or her academic peers. So whatever your score was last year, they will take a subset of students who scored a similar score, and then that SGP number makes up how you compare to those students, 50 being the average percentile growth from that to where it is. This is a typical sheet, a, this is obviously made up John Doe student, but this is a typical sheet that our parents have already received, should have received. If they didn't, please contact my office. And it outlines using the new measuring of not meeting, partially meeting, meeting expectations, and exceeding. And they give you, obviously, the school district and state averages as well. And if you go, if you look at this next slide, they also break it down by standard, which as a parent, I found incredibly helpful. This is the actual questions and how your child did on the actual questions, which I don't find terribly helpful. But the top area, the reporting categories, allows you to look to the actual standards and how your child might have done and allow for a more thoughtful and tailored conversation that you can have with your son or daughter's teacher. You'll see the new standards for meeting expectations are far more rigorous than the standards for proficiency level on legacy MCAS. And the state set those standards, and they raised them in order to help signal students readiness for next grade level, and also for including college and career readiness. So for 10th grade students, partially meeting or meeting expectations are better indication of their success moving into college and career readiness. And that last bullet point I went over earlier. Just to kind of answer any questions that people might have comparing the legacy to the new scores. In the ELA, earning a score of 472 or higher is considered passing. And in the mathematics, earning a score of 486 or higher is considered passing. Students, passing is not meeting expectations. You can be partially meeting expectations and still be passing. Students that scored between 455 and 471 will need to fulfill the Educational Proficiency Plan, commonly known as the EPP. And you can see those numbers for the math as well. And then if you go to the science, technology, and engineering, you have the legacy assessment scores because those tests are still in that format.
Bill, can I interrupt you on that one?
Sure, please do.
If a student, if a student is not above a 472, let's say, in English, some of those students have to retake the test, and others have to fulfill an educational proficiency plan. Is that right?
A student who has a 455 or higher has to also meet the EPP Educational Proficiency Plan, which may or may not be required to take that assessment again. It can be additional coursework, or full year work that you're doing in line with the guidance counselors. There is a minimal score that you have to achieve with 455. You cannot, for ELA, you cannot pass without that 455.
Okay.
But you would, once you've achieved the 455, if you do not achieve the 471 or higher, 472 or higher, excuse me, you would need a completed EPP.
Okay, so if a parent is looking at this, and their student is in that range of 455 or lower than 471, let's put it that way.
Yeah.
They will meet with the, somebody at the, at the school
Oh, yeah.
to assess what the next steps are.
Yeah, we are, we are always 100% know who those students are, know the work that we're doing. And often, to your point, Nancy, we will have students who retake the assessment. Sometimes it's just good practice and also good indicator of growth. And then we will put the steps in place necessary for appropriate EPP.
And?
That wouldn't be something we would wait for a parent to contact us, or that we would be very, that's a great question. I'm sorry. We are, we are very proactive with that.
And in general, you'd be reaching out in the beginning of junior year because the student in general would have taken it as a sophomore?
Yep, and you, and you should be, it should be, that actually brings us to a good point. Students in the class of 2020 who are still senior, who is still working towards passing with an EPP or without an EPP, actually are still under the legacy standards. So they're still in the 220, 230 range. I'm glad you asked that question. I didn't clarify that.
Thank you. Anything else? Jen has a question, Bill.
Sure.
Sorry, educational proficiency plan. What is, can you break that down a little bit?
That's the EPP. So I'll take math as the example typically as a fourth year. Like, math courses are part of the educational proficiency plan, so that wouldn't technically be a requirement under the, under the high school. But if a student is, does not score above a 472, we would require as part of an EPP an additional fourth math class to demonstrate growth proficiency in mathematics.
Okay, so it's a tailored plan to get the student to where they need to be to achieve?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
To, to be able to pass.
Right. So they have to retake. Ultimately, that's the goal, to retake?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
That's, this is where, okay.
It's a little confusing, sorry.
So you need, if you score four, let's just take math. If you score 486 or higher, okay, you have passed. That is, that is the minimum score you need to pass. Okay, start with that. If you score between a 469 and a, you have to have a minimally a 469 and an EPP, and that also is passing, and a completed EPP. So you have to complete, for example, that fourth math class that require additional math class.
Can I ask a question on something?
Sure.
I'm assuming you, you have to achieve a certain grade in that additional course?
You have to pass it.
Just pass it?
Yes.
Other than taking additional coursework, are there other things students would do as part of an EPP?
Yes. First of all, a student who is in this position is typically working very closely with academic support. So that's, so they are, they're getting additional support. It's a small percentage of kids we're talking about in this case. But they're, they are also getting very specific type of supports for their needs, so. Speaking of math, like, the fourth course is a tier-one kind of intervention strategy to ensure that the student's getting enough support and all the skills necessary to be proficient in mathematics. But we know based on the MCAS scores and based on the results and the feedback of their teachers that there are other areas where they need support. So those students also will break out smaller classes, will get that additional support. Wapo does everything to ensure a student can successfully graduate and pass all the necessary requirements.
I guess I'm still a little easy on what it looks like in practice.
I could come back with more details about an EPP, which is really hard.
Maybe, maybe at some point, just like a sample, autonomous example.
Yeah, we could bring a example.
You should have to look at it.
Yeah, because I, yeah, just an addition.
The class, the course works the easiest example, so that's why I'm giving that. You don't, you don't have to take a fourth-year math, but you wouldn't, in the case of an EPP, have to take a fourth-year math. So that's why I'm giving that as one of the examples for our students.
Any comments for now? Okay, thanks, Bill. Keep going.
One aspect that doesn't, that doesn't get, that we're gonna touch base on before we get into the scores is that our MCAS results translate to an accountability system for each school and for the entire district. So we'll see that there are many accountability indicators: student achievement, student growth, English learner proficiency, and chronic, chronic asthemaism. There are two kind of reference components, normative and criterion, which is based into the student achievement and student growth. The state is very, very interested for every district across the state of Massachusetts on raising performance for the school's lowest 25% of students. And they identify that lowest 25% of students by MCAS, and we are aware of those 25% of students, and those 25% of students actually make up 50% of our accountability rating. So accountability rating is done in two parts. By our entire student body, it's 50% under those four measures, and our lowest 25 performers. So it used to be a great deal of focus, and Dr. Goff, you can add to this, on the subgroups. And they said that what's happening is you're not getting a lot of equity, so they said that now our focus is the lowest 25% of every district across the state. That quarter will make up 50% of your accountability rating, of your score, in addition to your entire score.
And they would also say that you're closing gap. Districts might say, well, we're closing gaps, but they were, they were closing it this way. So this ensures that you're closing it this way.
Any question about that? That could be a bit.
I guess my question would be, do we have an accountability rating right now, and how are we doing?
Yeah, probably best I brought those, you can see all the accountability ratings.
That's a different, that's a whole different chapter.
It's a whole different chapter, yeah, because that brings in, like I said, some other normative criteria.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it, because I didn't, okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
So now let's get a little bit, now that I've kind of done our review, let's get a little deeper into our MCAS performance and results. So I start with this. This is just a summary of the 2019 scores for each of the grades and for ELA math and science, technology, and engineering. I just want to be clear, so there's no confusion here. The blue, I didn't do, like, blue means we improved, and red means we didn't. All I did by the blue, so you could see it, is our expectation as the next generation MCAS is new to our system, and this should be the expectation for really all schools across, all districts across the state, is that you should continue to see growth from year to year in your numbers. That not, isn't necessarily like- That not, isn't necessarily like 20% growth, but as students are getting used to the assessments, as our teachers are, are making adjustments, getting used to the assessments. So I just wanted to point out in blue, so this wasn't like this is where we did well, this is where we did bad. I'll only get into details of standards a little later on. You can see, as a whole, you're seeing an increase in achievement. I did not go into the SGP, you can see those numbers next to it. But I just wanted to see, you can see an increase in achievement, which should be our norm for the next few years. And that was the same when the MCAS made changes many, many years ago, that the state, that the schools within the state did, I don't wanna say poorly, but did down to as well, and showed a steady growth for about, over the course of about five years, making adjustments to the new standards, to the new expectations, and to the new rigor of the assessment. And that's our same expectation. We're gonna do a lot of, as we go a little further, I'm gonna get into a lot of each one of the grades, each one of the levels. And you'll see that the, that the, the MCAS always, especially even our individual parent reporting, allows you to see how we do as a school, how we do as a district, and how we do as a state. So I just wanna say two things about that before, before we get into the details, before we get into the data. Of course it matters how we do compared to the state. We believe Walpole is a top, provides a top notch education. Of course it matters how we do compared to the, to the districts around us. We wanna compete and be as strong as our neighboring communities. I'm not, I don't wanna minimize that. But I want all parents and I want all community members to know that regardless of how we did against the state, all the communities around us, we are always seeking to improve. And so while that's a good starting measure, just where we should be, I never ever want to be part of a district that says, well, this town pays this much for a kid, so we maybe should expect less education or more expectation, or this, this, this town has this sort of parents, or this town has this sort of kid. We believe in Walpole that every kid, every kid that is, can and will learn. And that is our starting point, that is our benchmark, and that is what is absolutely crucial to the work that we're doing day in and day out. And again, I don't say that to minimize comparison numbers because I think that's helpful and important to see where we are and where we can improve. But please know that regardless of how we compare to the state, and you'll see we compare well to the state, and how we compare to neighboring districts where we can do better, we believe we can improve in many areas. So this is the numbers that, it's helpful, those in front of you, I'm sorry, probably gonna be harder to reach from the screen.
I can't, she's...
Alright, I'll, very good, very good. So you, you'll see that whenever we do grade ten, you're not gonna see many years of comparison in the bar chat, in the bars, because then this is the first year of the next generation MCAS. So if you look down here in 2019, you will see that across the district, we're about a 67% of students meeting and exceeding expectation compared to the state, which is right around 61%. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through these slides relatively quick. You can stop if you'd like, but please know that at the end, I'm gonna get into what, how we interpret these and what these mean. So that's coming, I just didn't do it for each grade level, because we'd be here very late. What you will see after everyone is I do try to provide an example so that you can actually see the rigor and, and the work that's required. So this I found to be a great prompt. The one thing I'll tell you is that I took a screenshot, I pulled this from, this is, this is an actual MCAS essay question. But what you don't see is that next to it, students would have access to the reading based on Dracula, Rebecca, say something. So I did include that in the slide, so I wanna make sure people can see this. But this is the general prompt that most students get. You'll actually see that's consistent across grade levels. For this question, you write an essay based on the, based on the passages, which again, I did not include. Your writing should present, develop the central idea of thesis, provide evidence and or details from the passages, and use correct grammar, spelling, and punctuation. So just, I'll give you a minute or so, just to take a look at the level of questions our students or our 10th graders are being asked. So these are two examples, both of the same prompt.
I'm glad you included these, Bill, because I think it really, I, I think people look at MCAS tests sometimes and say it's a minimal competency kind of thing.
Yes.
And it's not. I mean, those are, they're, the expectation, especially with the next generation one, is real, real rigorous thinking.
Well, and, and I'm glad you said that Nancy, and I think it will come even more alive as we look at the third and fifth grade questions.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I think that's, I think that's when you'll really see it, because, I mean, right, you can make the case that a high school student, you know, a well-educated high school student should really start to be able to tackle some of these concepts around mood, or make, you know, this, this requires a deep level of synthesis. And, you know, you make the case, we want our 10th graders to do this. Wait till you see the eighth and fifth, they're great questions that, that bring out that as well.
So Bill, on that particular one, would they be expected to, to do both the Dracula Rebecca one and the letter to the congressman?
Yes, I'm sorry, these are two separate essay prompts, I just wanted to give you a couple samples.
Yeah.
So these are not one right after the other, these would be two different prompts, right?
But within the same testing session?
Yes, yep.
Yeah. That's what I thought.
Yes. Thank you for asking that.
Other questions?
And I'm gonna have more, so. And I'm watching, you're all taking the third grade math, so. Do you see it? Wait till I show you this question. So now you're gonna start to see the eighth grade, you'll be able to see the cross comparison. There was, Dr. Goff and I looked at these in great details. And, and there's not a single trend I'm gonna be able to point out that is consistent across every grade level. And again, if you wait till the end, I'm gonna speak to some specifics of grade levels and standards from a, from a district, with a district lens, I should be careful to say that. And we're lucky Mr. Prosegi is here, he's actually just coincidentally gonna get into some more detail, some things we're doing with math. So there was no major trend I could point out, except that you will see, as a whole, not every time, but across the grades, we did have a, we said, we saw small growth in exceeding expectations, which was good. It's a small percentile that, that we are happy to see across all grade levels. And again, we can make all these slides public because I know it's difficult to digest a lot of this information quickly in a quick slide show. Like I said, when we get to the last slide of the ELA, I'll go into more details of some of the standards. And then here's some prompts, here's some message prompts. So again, if you notice, I, I put the prompt up again, which is a little different, but not, not entirely. For this question, write an essay based on the passages. Your writing should present and develop the central idea, provide evidence and or details from the passages, and use correct grammar, spelling, and punctuation. And now you'll see eighth grade, sixth grade, and third grade. And again, to be clear, what you're missing here is a reading that they would have had to have done. In that third grade question, write an essay that explains how the author uses text features that help the reader understand grizzly bears. Be sure to use information from the passages to develop your essay.
Wow.
That is our, I, I could spend some time thinking about how to...
What does that mean?
Yeah.
Now, so again, so what's worth pointing out, I'm, I'm sorry, and I'm, maybe in hindsight I should have, and I can for future presentations, there, there was a, a reading prompt about grizzly bears, so...
But what is a tech, what do you mean by a text feature? I wouldn't even know.
It could be a number of things. The focus for the text feature in this case was, you would, what, what things allow you to focus, to, to center on how to be better understanding grizzly bears? So like, what is the evidence from the text that demonstrates that?
Or there could be an image with a caption underneath it, right?
I'm gonna go home and say, good job, my third graders.
For some, I do have full quotes, um...
Well, it was an exact same thing, it's about the exact same thing.
Oh my gosh.
With a caption, you could have taken the contents, all of that could be a text feature.
It could be like, it could be subheadings, it could be captioned photos, it could be infographics, charts, and graphs, and things. So like, in addition to just sort of the, the main content, it's kind of those features of when we read, that what's on the page to help guide our understanding of what's important and kind of structure the...
So the kids would know that ahead of...
They would have gotten explicit instructions in text features, like what is a text feature?
So teaching that.
They would have practiced that.
I think I would fill that.
Well, and that's, that's one of the important things for people to realize, you know, it's not like some test that...
It's not like the CAT tests we used to take.
Exactly.
Very different, it's very different from the legacy MCAS frankly. It's very different even from a test that our students would have taken three years ago.
And you're reading multiple pieces of text and then having to compare them and go back and forth, and that's important too.
A, a thing that we've done this year that is, that is brand new, we're actually just giving this information out for teachers, but it's, it's okay for us to share that our, that our parents know. Just, I'd ask our parents to be patient with us as we educate our teachers on this as well, is we have, we, we get a copy of every student's essay, and we have actually attached that essay for our teachers onto a student's X2 account. So our teachers can actually pull up every student's individual essay to see, you know, how they did and what they did. So I, as a parent, not of Walpole, but in a different, different community, I just, in a parent-teacher conference, just asked my daughter's teacher if I could see the essay because I was very curious to just, I find that sometimes it's, a score doesn't tell the whole picture. I wanna know how my daughter did so I can actually get some real feedback and provide some thoughts for her and support for her in the future. And so even that teacher that I asked, you know, didn't know that was even available. So we're working now, making it's available to all of our teachers and that, so they can easily take a quick glance and a quick picture of how our students did to support an individual student, but then also to make some bigger instructional changes and practices as they, as we get close to the MCAS and work on some of these.
Jill, can I ask a question?
Sure.
To interrupt you?
Yeah.
How, I was able to see how the writing component was at the middle school because that's what came with my kid's results. By the time we got to the high school, that writing component, I know it just was much lower than the reading, the language pieces. So here are samples. How did the 10th graders do on the writing portion?
Well, I'm gonna get into that a little bit actually in this, in this next slide. You mean, oh, because you're saying, I'm sorry, for your children, you saw how they did compared to...
I could see middle school, I couldn't find where those results were available in the high school.
How they did in the state, sure. So...
You know what, Bill, we have one more.
Yeah.
No, it's...
Never mind.
Sure.
We have zero.
So it's good, it's my second prompt here, which is why. So overall, we know that Walpole Public Schools outform the state's achievement scores and by standards, and that's pretty consistent, you're gonna see that for ELA, for math, and for STE. Specifically for a deeper dive in ELA, an area that we need continued attention and support is in the area of student writing. Continued emphasis on analytical writing prompts that reflect MCAS essays in open response will be a priority for all schools. And that has been a discussion on two levels, one in our cluster level meetings, at district meetings, and also specifically in PLC work, the work that's happening. As, as a state, we compare very high, especially in ELA, in our writing, but not good enough to where we wanna be as a school system. So I don't have that number right in front of me to give you like a quantifiable data number.
But that's just here, because at the middle school, it wasn't.
Yes, correct.
So it's that it catches up.
Yep, so that's one of the reasons why Dr. Goff and I want to engage in a six to eight ELA audit and evaluation that include an emphasis on writing curriculum and student writing samples. And then we are excited that right, right now, our Lucy Kaufman's Writing Workshop that you guys have had presentations to pass on, she continued to develop, and the continued development of foundations, excuse me, is being implemented at the elementary schools and should also have a positive effect in this area. So writing is, is very, very strong focus for us right now. And that is one of the major areas we'll be looking at in the six to eight ELA audit and evaluation that we need to do better at, and we will do better at. And this is a, this is a district prompt, just to throw you one out, so, you know, three to 10 is hard to perfectly capture. We can, at different date, go on a more detailed, specific grade level. So now we'll get in, into some more math scores here. So again, this is our 10th grade math score, which is why you do not see a three-year analysis comparison in the bar graph. And, and tonight, like I mentioned, we're lucky that Mr. Prosegi is here because he will go into a little more detail of math across, especially grades six to twelve. This is a math question, I included this one because there was, there is, not was, an increase in, what's nice about the computer-based MCAS is that, is that students can utilize some of the, the technology that's there for them. So if you look at this question of graphing the solution set, set of the inequality on the coordinated plane, you will see that students will use, it's hard to explain without a mouse, but they will, they will choose, you know, the, the line that they want, and they will represent the answer in this graph. Students who take the paper test, I did ask this because I was, wanted to clarify, will, will do the same thing just using a pencil and, and paper and the, and the resources they have that I listed. And this is to be a typical grade ten math question.
I would have to graduate.
No.
I'm glad Mr. Prosegi is here, if you have questions, how to solve that. Alright, so now you'll, you'll see now a, a grade to, and a grade to grade comparison of math, three to eight. And I'll scroll through these, but know that I, I do have some thoughts on our, on our scores and how we did and where we need to improve. And here's some math questions. So I, I have two slides here because I didn't get them all in one. So this is a grade, grade eight question, consider this expression. What is the value of the expression and your answer in this box? Again, what's important to point out is not all questions are multiple choice, which is, which is different and a change. And obviously makes, takes a lot of the guessing that can come into correct answers completely out of it. Grade five, and are you ready? Because we're all gonna do the grade three one. Coming up, next slide, grade three. Post office sells pages of stamps. Now, I have a fourth grader, so I look at this, I'm, I am amazed, this question. Perhaps I should have higher expectations in my own house. Post office sells pages of stamps, each page has the same number of stamps. One page of stamps is shown. Then there's a very interesting key. I would love people's opinion on that key. And then there's the question. Six pages of stamps, how many stamps did Chris survive at all? Tom got it after a little delay. At the way when we were testing him. Yeah, well, I won't ask you all that, I wanna embarrass you one. Is it in everyone's head? Is everyone at what? Answer's a hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
Well, what I found, well, what I found really interesting, and, and the point of this is not, I'm not here to criticize MCAS. I, like I said, we can learn a lot from these assessments. But I, as an adult, found this key very confusing. Because I thought keys are really meant to clarify when, when the information's not implied. Or I think this is pretty kind of clear on the expectation type. But just kind of interesting stuff that our third graders have to consider. Now, obviously, our third graders do work on how to use a key, which, which I find interesting. So math, similar to ELA, we out, we outperform in the state achievement by scores and standards. We have very low SGP's in seventh, eighth, and tenth grades. We need to do more work in those areas. I'm gonna, I identified three standards here, and the timing again is perfect. Mr. Prosegi is gonna get into more detail of actually how we emphasize. One thing, it's easy for me to say, we're gonna continue to emphasize in geometric measures, dimensions, interpreting function, reasoning with equations and inequalities. But Mr. Prosegi is gonna go into what that actually looks like among our PLC team and what that actually means for our teachers. We will continue to monitor the implementation of newly designed seven to eighth grade curriculum, which we're, we're just laid out in the recent year. We be regularly as math district teams evaluate six to twelve math curriculum and programming and where we need to improve, and doing to make bigger and more programmatic and structural changes to the work that we're doing. And then we have, for the, for the first time in, in my time in Walpole, we have a great deal of new benchmarking assessments for grades K to eight. And implementing and analyzing those new benchmarking assessments is gonna be absolutely crucial. And hopefully, because we're gonna be doing a better job of monitoring, monitoring through student progress in real time, we'll be able to see an adjustment and growth in MCAS assessments. And I actually talk about that at the end from some, some larger databases. You see comparison, now our students take, our ninth, the majority of our ninth grade students take the physics assessment. So you can see our scores here, there is a comparison to last year. And then you'll see our eighth grade, and in the second line I slide, do it our fifth grade. You will see the single bar because similar to our 10th grade, this is the first year, the very first year of the science, technology, and engineering next generation MCAS for our eighth and fifth graders. Here's a sample of grade five, science, technology, and engineering question. And what I, what I wanna point out, and I, I think some of you may know this, but what makes science, technology, and engineering unique is it's a summative assessment of several years. So it's only taken in fifth, eighth, and tenth grade. So it's... So it's, you're, we're measuring standards over a course of three to five, well, three to four years is the typical time. So states of matter, I was trying to think if I, I don't believe I studied states of matter as a, as a fifth grader, what we do now. And, and I should also point out, this was a, this is part A, this was a three-part question. These are the, this is an eighth grade question. And that is the full question, there was two parts of this. You see the real application of learning, right? Many traits of horses such as a coat color artificially selected when horses are bred. Describe one advantage and then describe one disadvantage. I mean, it's, it's one thing that, you know, to be able to talk about, to be able to talk about traits of horses and selecting traits, but then to really get them to describe the advantages and disadvantages of this practice, I mean, that is really going beyond some of our, it's just basic understanding of science, it's the application of science. These are the, these are the real differences in assessments that we're seeing. I think, I think the rigor when you see these questions really comes out. So one thing just to note is that, as you'll never see SGP scores on the science because the assessments are not given year to year, so the SGP is not applicable. This is the second year of our ninth grade students have taken the physics M-CAS. The results are still positive, but we're examining and updating our curriculum to reflect the, the physics M-CAS. So one area that we, we did not perform as high as we'd like, for example, when we looked, we evaluated the standards and our student results was electromagnetic radiation. And I mentioned this already, that this is the first year of the SDM CAS aligned with the new science standards for grades five to eight. We're still analyzing our new STEM codes resources that we started last year and working with MIT to provide PD and develop UBD units for the K to five curriculum.
Are there questions up till this point? We're a little overwhelmed, so keep going.
A lot.
Actually.
Yes, we've got one.
It's not a question, but we had talked to a subcommittee curriculum about science, just so people know, they have to pass, right? If they don't pass physics, they would take the next year.
Yes. And there's, there's, there's a few options when you take science. So either there's a biology assessment, there's a technol, there's a technology and engineering assessment. I, this chemistry, I'm actually, up for being honest, I actually don't, I don't want to misspeak because I don't know. I mean, the biology one, I'm aware, because I know our students use that, used to do that.
Right.
And I know there's a technology and engineering one, but I believe that there's a bit more.
So there's other options to pass, right? Just so people know.
Yep. Yep. All right. So how do we move forward? So I mentioned this earlier, one of the things that's really important for us is making sure that we're using our newly implemented benchmark, benchmark assessments for grades K to eight to monitor and provide appropriate tiered instruction for all students before M-CAS testing. One of the great educational leaders, a gentleman by the name of Rick DeForre, who unfortunately passed away, used to give an analogy that really stuck with me. And he used to say, there's, there's two kinds of autopsies we can do with students. It's kind of a gruesome analogy, but you'll never forget it. And he'll say, one's the autopsy when they're already dead. And what he meant by that is that they've taken the assessment and they've moved on and there isn't much we can do. And the other, he goes, our goal as educator is to provide walking autopsies. And I think our hope is, and our goal is, is we, is we do more thoughtful benchmark assessments. It is not to over-assess our kids. We want to give meaningful assessments that will improve learning, but will also give us a better picture of how kids are doing during the year so we can make appropriate adjustments to the work that we're doing within the classroom to provide more and better tier one and tier two support. So that's why I always think of the Rick DeForre analogy because, you know, so much of what has traditionally been given to educators is that there are students past work when they're starting, students have already moved on. Continue the important PD work at the elementary levels rooted in writing to improve M-CAS essay responses. I mean, this is brand-new work that is just being rolled out this year, and I'm excited to see the impact that it potentially might have on our M-CAS. And I'm not saying I know exactly the impact it will have, but it'll be interesting to see the application of some of those writing and the confidence in our students' writing in the K to five level. We really do need to complete a six to eight EL evaluation to improve rigor in writing across both middle schools. That's an area that Dr. Goff and I have spent a lot of time talking with our department chairs and our literacy coordinator, and something that's very important to us. Complete the development and implementation of new social studies curriculum to improve civic engagement and analytical reading skills. It should not be lost that while, while the ELA assessment is called the ELA assessment, our work that we do in any of our humanities, really across, as writings increase in all curriculums, including mathematics, that we should see improvement and growth as a result of the changes to the curriculum. Make appropriate adjustments in new ninth grade physics curriculum to reflect areas of growth in standards analysis, and that's because the ninth grade physics is still new in its second year, and also that the assessment itself is new, so we have to really get deep into the weeds and look at, at the work that we're doing. Investigate and make appropriate changes to the math program to show we're meeting the complex need of all students. While we always are looking at the standards and always making adjustments in the classroom, do we need to think and consider more structural changes to our math program, especially in our six to 12 curriculum? Continue to grow our related arts programs. I stand behind my music and my, and my art and my, and my related arts teachers, and we know the research is there. The better related arts program we have, the better our students do on M-CAS and stands and, and assessments. Develop a consistent vision for SEL strategies that can be applied to all schools across the district. When we look at M-CAS, we don't want to throw out the rest of our strategic plan. We're devoting so much time and so much thought to improving our SEL strategies. We know when kids feel more supported, when they feel safer, and they feel better about coming to school each day, they will do better on these assessments. And I'm going to end with the last one of how I started. We have to continue to believe that every Walpole Public School student can and will learn. That has to be the foundation of everything that we do. When we critically look at these scores and we take them seriously, believing in the growth of every student is crucial to the work that we do. This is very overwhelming, and I will say that this state does a tremendous job of providing more support to parents. So this information is, is available here for you. Nancy, I think you asked a really good question about accountability. We're, we'll send some stuff out that goes up to parents around each school's accountability rating and scores, but I can come back and Dr. Goff and I can speak in more detail about, about that.
That's great.
If you'd like. That is-
Thank you. Are there more questions at this point? Yes, Carrie.
Thank you, Bill, for this. I think it's, it's really comprehensive, but at the same time, a big piece missing for me right now is the subgroup data. And maybe that's coming later, or maybe we can get that at some point, but I think it's really critical that we're looking at not just the district as a whole, but our subgroups of students with disabilities, English learners, economically disadvantaged-
Sure.
Things of that nature because, you know, if the, if the lowest 25% that you referenced earlier, if the majority of students in that lowest 25% fit a certain subgroup or a certain profile, then we really need to maybe look structurally at how we're approaching those students and do we need to, to do something very different to help their achievement? And I 100% agree with you that M-CAS is only one measure of, of how students are doing, but I think that in a lot of ways, that subgroup data is useful because it's, it's an indicator of other gaps that might exist-
Sure.
-in school. So I would very much like to have that information and also to know if we, if we see any trends that are concerning the, how we move forward to address those.
Do you want me to speak a little bit to that now? For the subgroups? So I just made a decision-
Depends on how, do you feel prepared or would you rather-
On a, on a global scale, I can, and if there's more specific questions, it's, it's a good point, I can, we can wait if I can get more detail, more details to you. So really, to be honest, when we get around 40 or so slides, I just made a decision trying to like tailor it to what I thought would be potentially overwhelming.
Understood.
So to, to, to give more details, so Dr. Goff and I, I'm actually doing a comparative analysis of, of just our subgroups, so just our, our high need students, just our special education students in comparison to, to, or not, would we identify in a specific subgroup? So we, we've done those analysis, we can bring those numbers to you. We know that we, and, and some of the accountability speaks to, you know, creating the achievement gap between those students. We, we know that in a lot of the areas that I actually touched on there, so where I talked about seven, eighth, and 10th grade math, we performed poorly as, you know, as a, as an entire across the grade, but our, our subgroups also performed very low. We, we just started an intervention strategy for, at a tier two level for six to eight, and Mr. Pesegio's going to talk in more detail about some of the tier two work to address some of that achievement gap that exists between subgroups. But I absolutely give you that data, I actually have it, could get, turn it to you, very, turn around to you very quickly. That's not, that's not hard, but it is, it is not, is not something we have not spent some time discussing-
Of course.
-or getting into. And, and, and actually in more detail, students that, in this data, I don't know if you'll get it, just because it might identify kids, but we, we went so far as students that were engaged in sixth to eighth, at seventh, eighth grade last year that were part of a tier two intervention strategy, we actually pulled just their scores and did an evaluation of just their SGP's to see their growth. And so their growth had anywhere from about 55 to about 62 SGP, which we would consider positive, but not enough. I mean, we want more. We're going to give them that much tiered support, that much intervention, we think we can do more.
And that's wonderful that, that you're doing that. I think that's precisely how that data becomes useful to us-
Yeah.
...and can, can help us improve the results. And I want to be clear, speaking for myself, that I'm not, my primary concern isn't necessarily how do we get those kids' M-CAS scores up? It's just, I think it's an indicator of-
Right.
-across the board, how are we preparing the students and, you know, making sure we're meeting everybody's needs.
And that's why we look at the SGP-
Right.
-because we think the SGP's a fairer kind of analysis of the work we're doing with the individual kid, right?
Right.
That represents like just that kid compared to others. So it's a great point.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you, Bill. Thank you very much. Okay, so that gets us to Mr. Pesegio. Dr. Goff? Just go ahead, Mr. Pesegio. She's losing it.
Present and discuss the math, high school math.
All right. I don't have as quite as many slides, although now, as I'm looking at all the nice white slides that Bill took you through, I love the way these look on screen. I realize how much ink must have been used. I'm going to change my colors next year, quite literally. So I'm going to, I was here last March to talk about a few things. I'm actually, a lot of the discussion around some of the initiatives we talked about last year and some follow-ups to that. But I also hope to address some of the stuff that Bill mentioned, in fact, specifically around some subgroups, that is, as part, I want to talk about, something we've been looking at certainly in the last month as we analyze the 2019 M-CAS data. So just as an overview of what I hope to go through, and you'll notice this is a little bit varied, so much as, you know, the questions revealed it during Bill's presentation, I welcome that throughout this as well. Otherwise, you might ask me to backtrack to a totally different topic. I do want to talk a little bit of an AP update, where we are in terms of AP courses, enrollment, scores, trends that we're seeing. I'd like to go back and revisit the 2018 M-CAS results that I talked about last March and some of the initiatives that were associated with that, or where we ended up with those. Like to talk about the new position that we added this year, the math interventionist, what we're doing with that and what we hope to achieve with that new position. An example of some of the data analysis we actively do is specifically around quadratics, which is related to last year's initiatives, but we also, we were just giving data from 2019 where we could actually measure how we did on those initiatives. So it just gives a snapshot of the type of work we're doing in the department on an ongoing basis. And then I'd like to speak a little bit about the current M-CAS results and initiatives that we are looking to start at the high school based on that initial data that we have that we feel we can make actionable immediately this year. So first, the AP update. We are still offering AP Calculus, AB, BC, as well as Statistics. I believe last, last March, we had talked about, there was a question about computer science, AP Computer Science Principles. That is being offered, that's offered through the Technology and Engineering Department, so that's Joe Bracini has that under his umbrella, but that course is added to the program of studies here at the high school. We are always looking to grow the enrollment of these courses. That's been our goal, or, you know, since we introduced them, especially since we introduced BC, we wanted to grow that. But also, we made some changes to how students could enroll in AP Statistics. We had changed the enrollment a couple of years back to make any sophomore eligible and on up, up to AP Statistics. It used to be pretty exclusively seniors and then some juniors, but now we're seeing a much larger enrollment of sophomores. And they've been unnecessarily flooding in, you see students making very deliberate decisions about what year they wish to take that course and, and bound the rest of their schedule. In terms of AP Calculus, we are looking to see more students enroll in that. On average, we, we see about 90 or so students enrolled in the Algebra II Pre-Calculus Honors course in their junior year. So obviously, when I look at our enrollment in Statistics any given year, I'm looking at it against the potential of the students from their, particularly the, the two AP levels as well as honors calculus. We do offer calculus at the CP one level, but that also gets a lot of students who are not coming from our honors program. So it's a larger pool of students. And what we're, we're seeing, and certainly it's consistent this year, is about anywhere from 75 to 80% of students from that honors cohort are moving on to take calculus, the honors, AP, or AP level. This year, it's about a 50/50 split, about 50% of the students are doing the VC or the AB curriculum and about 50% doing the honors curriculum. And we're really trying to encourage more of the students. I've talked to a lot of students who have come to ask me about, should I take AK or honors? And for a lot of, they're dealing with anxiety about, is, is the course difficult? So a lot of it is coaching them through that, trying to help them make a decision of whether or not, or which level is most appropriate for their overall course load. But we're trying to encourage them to take the risk, because as we're going to see in a, in a moment, our students who do take the risk in these classes are doing well in these classes. And we're hoping that as students start to see more and more success among peers, that they feel a more confidence in their ability to be successful in these classes as well. And so as I was saying, the, the students at Walpole, specifically in the math AP courses, do continue to outperform peers on a state and national level. So I'll go through each of the courses just to give you an overview, and again, you have these slides as well. So starting with calculus, AB, and this is, this is, this is actually a little bit lower than we, we've had in years past. We are right actually around on state level with this. You can see if you look at the breakdowns, our, our mean score is actually just below the state where our percent of students who are scoring three, three or higher, which is considered the passing standard for AP, is slightly higher than the state, and in both cases, higher than the national level. We actually noticed this change occurred when we introduced the BC curriculum as an option. And it's not uncommon that our, our highest achieving students do move up first, which can leave a little bit of a drop in its weight, but we're hoping to see that move up. And I would encourage more students to be enrolling in that class. The VC calculus, now in its third year, this is the data from the second year results. The second year results were phenomenal. This group of students did a very nice job. They outperformed the state in both mean score and three percent, scores with a three or higher, in fact, you can see in both the VC and the AB sub-score, which students receive when they take the VC exam, we had 100% of students achieve that passing score. And their, and their group averages do speak for themselves with regards to that. There is no, and I didn't do the aggregate, they, they do not report a combined score for students who are enrolled in AB combined with this AB sub-score, because they are made up in a slightly different way. The AB sub-score is made up of a subsection of questions from the VC exam, and that's how they generate that score. But it's meant to measure how they would have done had they taken just the AP. And then with statistics, this has been a multi-year trend where our, with our students taking AP Statistics are outperforming the state and, and country on a very significant level, both in overall achievement and in the percentage of students with that three So I guess I'll pause there because this is, first, I'm with AP. Is there any questions about the AP scores or what we're doing AP wise in terms of curriculum?
I apologize for being late. Thank you, Nancy, for sharing. Questions from the committee? Ms. Gallaudet?
I was just wondering, how many students do we have taking AP Calculus this year?
Sure. The, this year, current enrollment in between the two of them, we have 14 students taking AP Calculus, and there's a cohort of 19 students taking AP Calculus. So the total 33 in the AP. That's, that's about a little under half of the 71 students taking calculus, the honors level or higher.
I know you're trying to get there, but I think our scores are excellent and the kids are succeeding. We just need to get more kids into that group-
I agree.
-to be competitive. But it's, it's good to know that we at least have the same number as what we had last year. And, you know, if we can improve the participation rate, that'd be great. Thank you.
Other questions? Same then? Keep going.
Okay. So the second item on the agenda was to actually go back about six, about eight months to when I was here in March talking about. So these are actually, this is the slide I had shared back in March of this year, and this was actually looking at the subgroups, which was really highlighting the achievement gap that we've been talking about, we know is here in the district and something that we're working to address. There are obviously multiple subgroups on there. I have the economic status and the disability status subgroup. I, a lot of my comments last time were around the students with disabilities, because that's where we're seeing the most significant gap in achievement. And so thi- this was the data that we looked at, and it drove a lot of our work last year in terms of the initiatives that we were working through. And we wanted to see how not only can we elevate the entire student body, but also make sure that we're just not not only elevating, but closing the gap in select areas as we identify. So these were the three initiatives I talked about last year, all related to the MCAS results. One of them was the math interventions that were built into the school day, staffed by teachers the students could sign up for. That was ongoing last year. That's present again this year as well. One of the things we had noticed in that two thousand eighteen data was the real surprisingly underperformance around the area of quadratics. Although we had seen internal data that was showing that as well in our Algebra II classes when they were starting the year. We felt there was a real gap in terms of retention of those important knowledge and skills. So we had a focus review built into all levels of geometry where students, teachers were visiting throughout the year, cycling through it, building up the concepts with the intent of showing improvement, but also really better preparing them for that fall entry into Algebra II in the following year. And then the third one was, you know, we do always try to keep the class sizes for CP two low so that we can provide more direct support in a one-on-one environment as much as we can. You know, with the combination of the small class sizes, ESPs in the classroom, and 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 interventions, we're hoping to provide them with as much as we can. Now, in terms of my comments today, I'm I'm not going to talk as much about the reduced class sizes, because that's an ongoing thing we try to achieve every year and we tend to achieve. We make it a priority. When we are building out the schedule, that we have those class sizes in a reasonable, a reasonable size. But I'm going to talk a little bit more specifically around math interventions in relation to the new position, and then I'll give you the examples of what we did with quadratics last year and into this year. So the new position we have this year at the high school is our math interventionist. The the ways in which we can use this position are numerous and probably more than one person can do any given time. So we even spent a lot of time thinking about priorities and what we are going to kind of achieve with this this new, this new individual in this position. The number one goal we have really identified and working at is really addressing that achievement gap with our low achieving students. Most of those students come from one of three groups. Those are ELL students who are often new to the district and many of them have very minimal English, but we need to actually acclimate it to school into the curriculum. Our students in the Essentials Math Program, and then our students in that who are enrolled in Math Skills who have identified math learning disabilities. We were very fortunate in the in the in the candidate search that we found the interventionists who had both a very rich background in mathematics, but also speaks multiple languages. Among those, Portuguese and Spanish, which is actually a a sizable chunk of our ELL population. So that was a very good find. It's it's really enhanced our ability to address that particular part of this subgroup. The this, the interventionist works regularly in those classrooms. We've established a little bit of a home base. Our schedule is very much in flux at all times, because we're trying to make sure she can move the students who need to work there in the moment. But our home base is working in the ELL classes, the Essentials class, and in the Math Skills classrooms as well. The reason I say it's in flux is all teachers in the department, we've created a a mechanism for teachers to request pushing interventions, where they can, they can reach out to the interventionist and say, we're working on something in class where there's a student who needs assistance with some prior knowledge. Can you push in to support this student actively in class? And that includes both students in that primary group, as well as students who are not in that primary group, but just could benefit from those particular supports. Again, I said, we we have a number one priority, but that doesn't mean we're trying, we're going to ignore the other students who can benefit from this resource. As through her work, we've been maintaining a log, a tracking sheet for each student. This is kept through a digital document, which is shared with teachers and with myself as well. It's meant to build a history and a log of all of the work that is done with each individual student, so we can see what they're working on and how they're progressing throughout the throughout the year. As I mentioned, it's using very high demands. Setting up priorities is important, and there are times where multiple requests we put in, and we'll try to see what's what's the place we're going to direct the interventionist to work on this particular day to get the maximum impact, and of course, then cycle back to make sure we are not missing the people who need that. Part of that heavy load comes from requests that come out of our transition program, students who have been out of school either for concussion, illness, or some other extended reason. In order to help support that load, we will be doing that is, those are, those requests are cycled through the department chair, and then in coordination with the math interventionist, one of, one or both of us tries to actually get them to work with those particular students, especially those who have missed a sizable amount of instruction. And what we are in the process of doing now, and this actually speaks to some of the benchmarking that Bill mentioned, is we are implementing, the beginning implementation of the iReady diagnostic tool here at the high school. It was originally piloted last year with small groups through the math coaches at the middle schools, and has now been rolled out, grade six through eight, at the middle school for all students. So for this year, the students that our interventionist has identified as the primary students that she is working with, we are going to be taking them through that benchmarking assessment, not only to provide benchmarks, first of all, we can track their progress, but also for the actionable individualized data that it does provide, which I will give a few examples of in a moment. Long term, we are hoping that actually there's something that we could add to the high school, nine, ten, so that we could actually have a benchmarking tool at the high school that will give that types of actionable, actionable data. So this is actually a snapshot of, so this is, I know it's a little tough to see, but this is just an overview of the type of data that we get, and I can get into all the granular details. But this is a snapshot of a seventh grade student based on the initial diagnostic done at the start of the year. If we look, and I've kind of tried to call attention to here, the overall assessment of the student is that they are approaching grade seven. They are currently enrolled in grade seven, so this is a student who's a little bit behind, and there's a gap that needs to be, needs to be closed. And the arrow I have pointing there points out the biggest gap for the student is actually in the domain of number and operations. And the nice things about iReady is it does break down by domains, so you can identify where should your work be focused. This student, for instance, it would not be of great use of their time to be working on them with measurement and data, because they are currently on grade level with measurement and data. When we go into a sub-level of this, so if I were to go deeper into number and operations, the type of data we're going to get is very specific, a breakdown of the skills within that domain and how the student fared on those skills. You can see on the left side, it provides what they already can do. So again, these are strengths. These are things that we can build upon. There are things that we don't need to necessarily spend time trying to bring up, because the student has demonstrated those skills are there. But on the right side, you can see under next steps and resources, it has very specific things that the student needs to work on. Adding and subtracting decimals to hundreds, multiplying multi-digit numbers by two-digit numbers, et cetera. And this student, and if this sounds a little bit like it's maybe lower than grade seven, that indicator of needs improvement actually means this student was two or more years behind in that domain, and that's why this is really going back two or more years. We hope to use this type of data, yes?
I'm sorry, just not to interrupt, but I think I was assuming the math interventionist is a high school position, but is it a middle school?
No.
Six through twelve?
It is a high school position.
It is a high school.
We are in the beginning of rolling this out with, at the high school, so we're going to be using it, but I wanted to give you an example of how it is being used. Because this is the data that we currently have, we currently have access to in the middle school.
So the iReady diagnostic is something that just the regular math classroom teachers are using at the middle school level?
Yes.
And is it, does it have its own assessment tool built in, like similar to the Scholastic Math Inventory, or that they take throughout the year, or how does it work?
So iReady, it's it's an adaptive test, where it is taken three times during the year.
Okay.
It's taken in the beginning of the year to establish a baseline measure for where they are, and then will be taken again in the middle of the year and at the end of the year.
Okay.
So in addition to tracking their progress, it'll tell us specifically if they are behind in a particular domain, what should we be working on with them any given time.
Thank you for clarifying.
Can I give some more context too?
Sure.
That'd be helpful. So iReady was was just used last year as pilot, because we'd never used the product before, for students who were involved in getting intervention support. And then when we saw, you know, the 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 improvement, we realized we wanted to get more comprehensive benchmarking across all, we then rolled it out to all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And then there is actually a small group that received some of the services through iReady that are part of that intervention group. Mr. Pesagio, they are, they just have this intervention support this year, so they are doing a similar, now they're taking similar steps that we did in the middle school, and they're applying just this pilot to the small group of students. So the data we have is for the kids from last year. He's just giving an example.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sorry. I wanted to give context, because I made your question. If you didn't know, that context makes a lot of sense for people watching.
Thank you.
Continue, sorry.
Yes, I'll, thank you for the question. So our hope is that what this will do is we'll fur- we'll further inform the work that the math interventionist is currently doing. She works with students, she meets with them one-on-one, and she's like, has identified skills that she feels students need to work on. But it's nice to have this external assessment that can really get it down to the specific details. So instead of spending time trying to figure out what they need help with at every given, every given moment, she can actually have a list of things to work individualize for each student, and will really drive the work throughout the year. And as I said, we're also hoping to to measure the the impact of this new position throughout the year, and this will give us an means to do so.
They guide us, emphasize one thing you said, I'm sorry, because I think it's really important. And this is the other reason why these benchmarking, these tools are important, is because when we look at like a seventh grade student's MCAS results, we're just seeing seventh grade standards. This particular student is actually performing two grades lower than 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 we want them to. So they actually need support and intervention for fifth and sixth grade standards that they're not getting in a seventh grade classroom, even if the seventh grade teacher is making adjustments for what they their kids didn't learn the year before. Because again, their focus is seventh grade standards. And I think that gets lost a lot, that we just need to improve on the standards, but some of our students need to improve on the standards from several years earlier. You said that, I just wanted to emphasize why that's so important for the benchmark work.
And I anticipate, and actually I do anticipate, you know, the conversations with the interventionists, particularly with some of our ELL students, that we will not be surprised to see students in different domains at middle school levels or possibly lower in some cases. And again, we're looking forward to having that data so we know where to begin. Any other questions around the interventionist position?
Yeah. I know that this position came about last spring, and originally when we were doing contract negotiations, we were talking as if the regular math classroom teacher would be responsible for intervention. And it was great that we came to this, to get this position, because obviously you're using it and you're using it well. I guess what I'm getting to is, I think that the regular math classroom teacher has responsibilities like this also. So is it, I see what you, what you get as far as data from iReady. But if I'm a regular teacher who teaches ninth grade, do I get data when my students come in to say, these kids, based on their MCAS scores, have been falling behind in these these areas, and it's on me to find a way to help fill the gaps? Or are we not able to to expect that of the regular classroom teacher? Because ideally, all of these kids in subgroups have a regular math teacher as well. So if we were concentrating, let's say, just on the subgroup kids at first, you have two adults who can be providing intervention potentially. And then you can also help the kid who's on the cusp of being able to do, you know, to do more work, because they've matured now that they've gotten to the high school. Are we expecting the same kind of work for our regular math teachers is what I'm asking?
So yes, in terms of addressing their skills, I, Bill talks a lot about tier one interventions that happen within the classroom, especially because if you're talking about the subgroup students, all of our students in CP, that are in the CBT classes are not necessarily part of that subgroup, but most of our student, our students with disabilities are in those particular classes that are supported. So we do have more, we do have a better teacher-student ratio of the expectation, and we can help them. And that's also actually in coordinations, not just to, if they're in the skills class, then there's also a third person that we are looking to coordinate and partner with. The moving forward, and I'm very specific in wanting to make sure this is the case, that this math interventionist position is an add-on in addition to not in place of. Because if it is in place of, it is a net zero change for us. So that is the expectation we are, we are driving forward. The teachers need to be aware of this. And actually, I'm hoping moving forward, as we can get more of this particular data, this is data I don't want to only get to the interventionist.
Exactly. Thank you. Yeah. Because math is such a cumulative subject, that if somebody was having an off year as a seventh grader, and those skills aren't there, somebody at the high school level needs to fill in those gaps. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's that unusual. Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Same then? Keep going.
So the other two of the items that I addressed was our work around quadratics. So I actually want to talk a little bit about what we saw here, what positives we take from that and kind of next steps that we go through there. As I mentioned, back in spring of two thousand eighteen, we had noticed underperformance around specifically factoring and solving quadratic functions, which is such the foundation of Algebra II. So to really move forward into Algebra II and then calculus beyond that, that foundation's out there, it's very difficult to be successful in those classes, and then any higher level math beyond that. So we we had noticed this weakness, we knew, we know that as part of our curriculum, it's actually a major part, the last, you know, twenty-five to thirty percent of the Algebra I curriculum is very much quadratics, it's a comprehensive study of quadratics in freshman year. And we started noticing, you know, the, obviously, the students taking MCAS at the end of sophomore year, and they enroll in Algebra II in their junior year, and we were seeing a lot of drop-off, and the data in those first two examples show, you know, we're performing as a school, you know, beyond the state on, you know, the one question, eight percent below, and the other one, despite the fact that they presented as a value out of one, it's really six percent below. So we were significantly below the state on these foundational skills. This is the data that actually led us to, through our PLC work and specifically the geometry team last year, to really say, well, how can we make sure we're addressing this in geometry? Because we know, we have data that shows at the end of their freshman year that they have grasped these concepts, that they are, they are losing them, and either through atrophy or just thinking it's a separate subject, as many of our students do with algebra and geometry. So there was a concerted effort to lace it throughout the entire year. Through the geometry PLC, they started in the beginning of the year, making sure they were lacing in basic things like factoring, multiplying, binomials, and then really building up to those core skills at the end of the year, so that students will have a stronger grasp, really with an eye towards the retention through Algebra II, but also so we could see it on the MCAS. And the spring two thousand nineteen data, and it's reported slightly differently, because we are on a different assessment now. But when we went through and we did our analysis and we were looking for those problems related to factoring and solving quadratics, we can see that we we saw an improvement. Not only are we above or at the state, in particular around factoring, the quadratics, we went from eight under to six over as a school. And and that's the type of result we were wanting to see. That's not to say the work is done. We know what we did last year had an impact, and so the intent is obviously to continue doing that as part of the regular curriculum in geometry and not to lose sight of that. We don't want to do a one-year fix, abandon it, and then see the results regress back to what we saw in two thousand eighteen. In addition to this, and this, and this was a positive thing to see, when we look at the achievement amongst our subgroups, when we looked at these same questions broken down for our students with disabilities, in the two thousand eighteen data, they were also below the state. There was a ten percent and three percent. I should be very clear, this is comparing against other students with disabilities in the state, so it's an apples-to-apples comparison. And in the two thousand nineteen data after this, they were eleven percent and eight percent above that particular group, which is, you know, in the case of factoring, quadratic, there was a twenty-one percent swing in the, in the positive direction. So it's it's a promising result, something we were very happy to see, that the group that seemingly was most impacted by what we did was our lowest achieving students who struggled in math. And our hope is to to use that as a model to build upon. That this, we have evidence here that when we approach it the right way through our, through our curriculum and not separate from, that we can see a positive result. Which really leads us into the work that still needs to be done, as we were talking about. So this is some of the subgroup breakdown for our current year. As as Bill talked about, it's not, you know, this slide, though, it looks like the two thousand eighteen slide is really not appropriate for comparison, mainly because it's, again, it's not a direct, it's not a direct correlation between the old advanced proficient measurement, as well as the exceeding, meaning expectations. Exceeding and meeting expectations reflects a higher standard, as the state has intended. That's not to say that the information doesn't matter. In fact, we still see the gap, and if anything, that increased expectation from the state magnifies the gap, as we can see here in that particular subgroup disability status. So the gap is present, and it's going to require even more effort to really help close that gap by elevating our lower achieving students. So similar to how we did last year, we looked into what is the data telling us, where can we spend our time? I want to give you a little bit of an overview of how we did it. We spent, you know, a significant, significant amount of time over multiple days looking at this, so I'm not going to get into all the details, but I want to show you where we started and how it led us to where we are currently in terms of our action steps. The first thing we looked at, and this is a little bit of overload, we wanted a visual of how we did on each standard. So these are the results by standard. It's very difficult to read. I I know that. When I, when we look at this department, in addition to having the visual, we actually have the raw data next to it, so that we can specifically see measures and pick out standards that we want to investigate further. But as an initial look, it was very helpful. We can see at a glance strengths and weaknesses. We can see where we had standards that a large percent of our students were suc- that a large percent of our students were successful, and that in standards where a large percent of our students were unsuccessful. It helps drive our work. It does not account for item difficulty, we're well aware of that, so item difficulty related to different difficulty in standards, or with the new assessment, any kind of technology embedded that might throw off. But that didn't matter for us, we wanted to see a clean look on this and see, what does the data tell us? And this guided our investigation, both into the standards and which items we wanted to look at. One thing the Department of Education did very well this year, with the, I was very worried with the legacy test, it would be hard to get our hands on the actual questions, oh, sorry, with the new test. The legacy questions, we posted in PDF, and you can download it and you can look at it. But they built a very nice, easily accessible online library of these questions, where when teachers are looking at these documents that we downloaded from these, we are able to click on the question and pop the question up right away. So including being able to see how the technology worked, and we weren't entirely unfamiliar with it, because the Department of Education had actually released practice questions last year, practice tests, which all of our students had worked through in their math classes to get familiar with those tools. Excuse me, with those tools. So that was our first pass, it gave us some initial information. But as I said, it really had no accounting for any kind of variation in difficulty or technology implications. So we then wanted to look and say, "This is one level, but the next level is how do we fare against the state"? And so this is what we looked at. Again, we have the numbers associated with this as well, but we wanted to look at the visual. Because I'm sure you can see at a glance, things pop out very quickly, where we exceeded the state and where we significantly fell below the state in those particular ones. Three bars in particular jump out at us. And those were immediately the first three items, three standards we started investigating to go from there. So, this gives us clear strengths and weaknesses relative to peers. Not that those are the only important things, I don't think it's enough to say, you know, that if we were on level with the state or even slightly above, that that's good enough. But if we're trying to see where our high-impact areas are, we know where we need to be looking to see if there's actually change that needs to be made to the curriculum. So those are where we began. This further guided the investigation. And what we started doing at this point, just said, "Okay, well, where are the places that we can make actionable moves, like what we did with quadratics last year, to make immediate change and immediate improvement"? And again, this is really summarizing a multi-hour process into about a five-minute explanation. But what we actually took from that were the following, and this is similar to what Bill shared with us shortly, a while ago. The areas of concern that we identified, and we looked at it through a standard, we also unpacked the standard to really get down to the concepts. We noticed our students had a definite lacking of the ability to work with applications of formulas. And this was actually in multiple areas, which is why I think it's worth expanding upon. That included formulas which they would not necessarily be expected to know, there may be formulas that are unfamiliar, that are presented on the MCAS and explained, and then they're asked to work with that formula. But also around formulas that come on the reference sheet, you know, the MCAS reference sheet. And what we noticed, a lot of our students, when we look at how they're doing their work in class, they are familiar with formulas, but they're familiar with them presented in different ways. So we need to help there's that gap for them to see, you know the formulas, you need to be able to see them in different ways. It's that, really, that transfer skill, being able to work with those. And that tidens a lot of geometry standards. As you can imagine, that largest deficit with the state actually was a geometry-based question around bonding of a peer. So that was consistent what we saw. We saw a weakness in linear inequalities, both graphical, two-variable graphical and one-variable analytic. And actually, the question, and there's no coordination here, but Sister from Han shared the question that we looked at, that graphing question was a two-variable inequality question that we needed to actually address. We also noticed, students showed difficulty in comparisons of data sets, specifically if they were given two data sets, asked to compare measures of center and spread, the ability to analyze the two and draw conclusions. And then really, a big conceptual area was around dilations in geometry. So, where we inputted that, said, "Okay, we know these are the big four that we've seen the most, that we actually feel we can make an impact in the future". Three of them actually tied together into one coherent theme, and that is those applications of formulas, linear inequalities, and comparisons of data sets, that's all material they've seen in prior grades. And similarly, so just like quadratics was something they'd seen in prior grades. So we wanted to make sure, is this something that we are actually just not emphasizing enough, you know, either through regular review? I didn't want to do something artificial, say, you know, the week before MCAS, we'll review these topics. We want this built-in nationally to the class. So we talked about making it something that you do at the start of class, or throughout class, or at the end of assessments. So how does it be something that they're just constantly revisiting? So that would address those three areas, similar to what we did with quadratics to success last year. And then the larger focus on dilations when discussing similarity is a structural change we need to make to the curriculum. And that actually is something that has been driven by the change in the test. Dilation's, geometry overall, used to be a much smaller representation in the MCAS exam. This new exam actually is supposed to be a 50/50 split between algebra and geometry, which is a positive change. And dilation's actually got heavy representation through the questions about translations. Our students are, the data shows they are very comfortable using rigid transformations, but dilations, these non-rigid transformations, are things they definitely need more work on. So we know that when we talk about similarity, we're going to have to spend a significant amount more time helping them understand dilations and the actual mechanics of them, what it means to be a dilation in a non-rigid transformation. But those are all things that we feel comfortable that we can address this year and then continue moving forward. So that's where we currently are. Obviously, we're in the beginning of November, so we have many months ahead of us in working with this data.
Further questions?
So this, a lot of this focuses on the MCAS data, but are you doing, are able to do the same thing with the SATs? Because I know it's something we talked about before, wanting to see some braves-in-the-mouth section of SATs. And I think, I know Mrs. Galvin, and give her credit, has often talked about using some of the concepts in the classroom and exactly what you're talking about, like with the quadratics, you know, reviewing that, putting it in, feeling like that would be helpful with the SATs as well.
And that is, I didn't feature that in this discussion.
No, I know.
But that is something that is, again, in terms of curriculum, the curriculum alignment, particularly in Algebra II, with SAT, is much better than it used to be. And so, helping prepare, the teachers are incorporating test-taking strategies, multiple-choice questions, revisiting them. We have strongly been encouraging incorporating the Khan Academy tools into the class. We've been doing, specifically, not necessarily related to what the teachers are doing on a day-to-day, but in addition to, we've really tried to do a big PR push on that tool, to really inform parents about the fact that this is here, and we can do things in class, but this is additional work that you can do outside as well. It is something that we do want to incorporate more, I agree with you. Especially with the resources available to us, it's not something that we have to create, you know, we can access.
Right. I feel like geometry previously had been an area of the most concern, perhaps, if I'm remembering back when my other two took it, so.
Who's going?
Related to what Beth was just talking about, these areas of concern that you have identified here, would they be addressed in ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade classes? Or is it mainly changes that you'd be making in the ninth and 10th grade curriculum?
So, well, these are, you know, they are, especially the three that I referred to, they are actually addressed starting in middle school through ninth and 10th grade. And since, as you said, the cumulative nature of mathematics, they all carry through into 11th, 12th, and so forth. So, what we're seeing, the data showing us that when we're getting to this endpoint of sophomore year, for some of them, there's now a gap.
Right.
It hasn't so, it needs to be addressed, and we're trying to address it prior to the assessment now. But certainly, the students coming out of it is something that needs to be addressed in those particular classes, typically Algebra II, as I said, around those quadratics concepts. But inequalities as well, applications of formulas, the formulas only get more complex moving forward.
I guess what I'm getting at is, I think you're on to something. I think that this idea of really, you know, cycling back to the things that the kids have had the most trouble with, is, it's helpful for the kids who clearly have trouble, but it's pretty much helpful for everybody, if you ask me. I think I read that there's similar information that you can get from the SATs, which would be the same kind of relevance to changes that should be made in the classes that we're offering to juniors and seniors. So that if we know that typically the Walpole High kids have areas of concern based on what you get from SAT data, you could make adapting moves for your 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. And I just wanted to bring it up, because I think that it's, you know, it's still the case that we need to make improvements in that area, for sure.
I agree.
Okay.
Further questions? Ms. Chini?
Just going back to the APs for a minute. So, both you and Mrs. Galvin said you'd like to increase the numbers participation. How could that happen?
Well, certainly, you know, the initial pool we're pulling from would be coming from that enrollment in Algebra II honors. So, you know, as a start, students who successfully reached that class and successfully completed that class have demonstrated an ability to at least enroll in one of these classes. I would like 100% follow-through in that regard. All right, I know in some cases, I'm going against student interest where they may want to say, "I only want to take one math, and statistics is more of my interest". And I'm not necessarily wanting to talk that student down, really emphasizing the importance of it. That would be in terms of the existing group, but also this idea of encouraging students to stay with difficult classes. Algebra II is a difficult class at all levels, honors especially. So, that group of, you know, 90 students, we don't start off freshman year with a group of 90 students, we start off with a group that is closer to, I mean, anywhere from 100 to 120-ish, depending on the year. So, I would like to build work in retaining those students throughout their four years as well, so that they feel eligible for this. Generally, if a student has, excuse me, by their junior year, backed out of the honors program, they're not necessarily going to reach for these AP classes. So being able to try to keep them invested and keep them confident. I will say, I definitely know students who I know well, who I work with, who I am confident could be successful in these classes, but they're not eligible. So it's about really trying to build that confidence so that they can. And that's not just me, that's incumbent upon the entire department to support.
Well, what, yeah, what determines eligibility?
For the AP classes? So, as with all classes, there's a prerequisite grade, there's a teacher recommendation associated with it. But ultimately, just like all of our classes, there is a waiver process associated with it. So a student, a student who wants to take the AP class, I don't think I'd turn anyone away from them. I'm not in the business of doing that, I mean encouragement to take them. So, it's a combination of, you know, past success in previous classes, teacher recommendation, and really, a student's interest. A student who's interested in these classes, we want in those classes.
I guess, I just wonder if there's a consistent message for eligibility, because I think sometimes some kids get tapped in certain classes and not in others, even with similar grades. So that would be really important to bring up the number of kids enrolled. Because if some kids don't feel encouraged, or feel like they're able to do it, they won't do it.
And I think, yes, encouragement is a big piece of that, and that's something, I'm one person of, of 14 of us, so to get that consistent message out will help. I agree.
Related to that, I think there can be a fair amount of subjectivity in how teachers grade students, and also recommendations. So I'm wondering if there's like a more wholly objective measure that could be incorporated into the prerequisites to catch a student that might otherwise have flown under the radar, but actually does have the ability to be successful in that AP class?
Some of the other data that we do have access to, we mentioned some of the data we get from SATs. We get an AP readiness report, students based on SAT scores, what students have identified as potentially successful. That's data that we use as well. That data is shared with teachers to say, "This is the students where they are when you're making your recommendations". Like I said, if we move forward with iReady in grades nine and 10, it doesn't go beyond grade nine and 10, but we will then have data that will show a student in 10th grade who's functioning at an 11th grade level, and those are students we know. That's an extreme example, but, you know, you can get a sense of external measurement, as you said, helping inform.
Further questions?
Related to the getting more kids to high places, I remember we had a consultant a few years ago, who, and we have talked, we've gone sort of full circle on the idea of starting accelerated math classes in the middle school to encourage the kids who, to just encourage more kids. I remember the consultant was saying, and this was, you know, five or more years ago, "We should have more kids at high places". And one way of doing it is getting, is getting them started with more rigorous math, the ones that are ready. And then still leaving a path for the student who's maybe not as mature as a seventh grader, but that's, we have that path already, because that's what we're doing. I question whether we should be more open to accelerating kids somewhat in the middle school area.
And we, and to speak to that, I think I had mentioned briefly about this, we had actually done an assessment around a subgroup of students last year in grade seven to assess, we have a group of students in grade eight this year at both middle schools who will benefit from such a thing and feel are ready for it. And that was of a tool of our own design internally, which, you know, tools that are developed internally, they're good to some degree, but they're not benchmarks, so it's a little bit difficult to say how good or bad it is. It doesn't overestimate or underestimate where we are. I'm hopeful, now that we have the iReady data, that we'll actually have, we have an external measure to identify a group of kids who are really thirsting for more. We identified a subgroup at both schools this year, and the cohort was very small. Of course, it wasn't big enough that we could actually make the whole class to run through. The math coaches are working with those students through extensions to provide enrichment activity that take them to deeper mathematics, to really try to challenge them. That's a starting place for this year, that's not where we're looking for state.
Yeah, I'd like to keep that on the radar screen, because it does seem like in the lower grades, we have that cohort, but they don't last through middle school for some reason, as high performers. So, I think it's a group that we need to keep an eye on as well.
Further questions? Seem them, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
We're on our final order of business, is number four, the FR21 budget timeline.
Yes.
What's up?
My voice last.
You want to read it, Bill?
You'll have to take over, Bill. But, yeah, so the budget timetable process, the school year in your packets, so you can read through the dates of when we're releasing the templates to principals, involving through up to the public budget areas.
Anybody see anything problematic right off the bat with the schedule?
It's actually not problematic with this schedule, but it just reminded me that we have a conflict with a school building committee meeting, probably the same night that we're scheduled to do the Fails League Roger scholarships. You know, maybe we can just put out a doodle poll and get an alternate date for us, because that's the only meeting in December that's proposed for the school building committee.
I don't see a problem with that. It's a fun evening, but I think we can do any evening. But, so we'll see what folks' availability are. It's good to do it now, early November, because December fills up quickly, you know, folks is.
I can take a look at that.
Superhand's book, was I going to read it?
We'll see how much I can get.
I'll read for you.
I'll skip some of it.
I skipped the early part.
I'll do some of it. But, I talked already, the student council talked already about last Friday, and I was able to get to the last home soccer game for JV at Byrd, and the Bar City girls game at Walpole High School on their senior night, which was a great night. And last Friday, I was able to stop in at Boydin's Monster Mash. That was a packed house once again. It was really nice to see the generations of families. You had students, you had parents, you had grandparents, it was wonderful. Early release day this month is going to be parent-teacher conferences. The next early release is for PD, will be December 13th. In terms of school visits these past eight days, I spent time at Elm Street, Daniel Feeney preschool, and Boydin, meeting with principals and visiting classrooms. Some areas of focus this time around was guided math, digital learning, writers workshop, and reading centers. So really allowing for that engagement and individualized instruction. As part of Walmart's grand reopening, they donated $1,000 for our literacy program at the elementary. Shannon Villan accepted that, so that's going to go, as much as needed, every bit will count for that. You have an enrollment update, I believe, in your packet. Our total enrollment is 3,757, and we've enrolled eight students this month. So hopefully, we're starting to level out. The October 1st and March 1st, those are the official numbers for Sims, for DESI, and those are what we go with in terms of reporting. Nancy and I are going to be going down to the MASCE, MESS conference at the end of this week, or actually tomorrow evening. And that's the largest gathering of educational leaders to really look at critical issues of education today. Our next walk with Bill and myself will be Friday, November 15th, so hopefully people can join us. And then I'm going to have Bill read this part for me, because this is vital, this is really important, so we want to make sure that we get that.
My best voice for children.
Thank you, Bill.
Finally, last Wednesday, many of us attended the MSBA board meeting in Boston. We were pleased to announce that we were officially accepted into the feasibility phase. phase. The feasibility study will examine potential solutions to the issues identified and will develop the most educationally appropriate and cost-effective preferred solution for MSBA consideration. The next step in the feasibility process is the procurement of an owner's project manager to work with the school building committee. The goal is to submit all required documents and applications no later than February of 2020. Since, once the MSBA approves this process at the OPM review panel meeting, we will go before a similar process to hire a designer. We look forward to continuing our collaborative partnership with the MSBA, and will provide updates leading up to the community forums. After the MSBA board vote, we participated in another meeting where we were informed about the next steps and all the paperwork that is required. We are, we were commended for Walpole's ability to move effectively through the eligibility process. Another important piece is to ensure that we communicate the district's educational vision, and the decisions that were, that are made must reflect that vision. This is a part of the detailed education plan, but it is advantageous that we start this process now. Today? Today, we, well, you guys also visited, middle schools, this is like being John Malkovich. So today, they visited Braintree Middle Schools, East and South Middle School, and next week, they'll be visiting Naik. Any thoughts?
Thanks.
Comments from the Braintree visit? Those who want?
Jen, say.
Very useful, very, very. Braintree has two middle schools, they're renovating and adding on to one of them. The addition is largely complete, but the renovation isn't. And so they're living in a space while construction's going on, and it just gave us a lot to think about. For example, there was a very high-energy principal who was giving a lot of his time to us, but you can tell that he's spending a lot of his time being a construction management person. And, you know, it made me think of, how do you keep education going on when you're asking that much of your principals to do other things? There was, there was a lot of disruption related to renovating a building while students are going to school there. And what we learned in the second middle school, they have two, is that originally, they were going to add on and renovate to that, but they had to go through the process that we'll have to go to. And they came to the conclusion that it was more cost-effective to build a new school, even though they really started with the premise that they were going to do the same thing. So it sort of validated what we had been told had to happen during the MSBA process. But it was interesting, very useful.
Good.
I think that's good.
Further questions or comments for Dr. Goff?
I won't be able to answer.
Moving on, MSBA update, it's only further to, that was excellent work. Subcommittee activity, we had a few, yes?
Yeah, we had curriculum subcommittee, which we talked a lot about, you know, the EMCAST and math report, and a little bit about Spark Highness. That was a subcommittee report, and then we also have the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, just to make sure that my goals are aligned with the evaluation metrics.
Anything else on the subcommittee reports? Seeing none. Citizens' comments?
I interrupted the presentation.
Nice, excellent. Approval of warrants, donations, and mess. Mrs. Nieto.
I will make a motion to accept the following payroll warrant from October 17, 2016 PA for the amount listed in your packet. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Nieto, second by Ms. Syrek, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600.
I made a motion to accept the following counts payable warrants from October 24, 220017, and from October 31, 220018 for the amounts listed in your packet. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Nieto, second by Ms. Syrek, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600.
Yes.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the following given donations to Boydens School, Old Coast Road School, and Elm Street School from Bay State Textiles Recycling for $95, to Boydens School from the Boydens School PAC for tech supplies in the amount of $800, and to Elm Street School, Artsonia Commission in the amount of $937. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Nieto, second by Ms. Syrek, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600.
I'll make a motion to approve school committee meeting minutes for October 21, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Nieto, second by Ms. Syrek, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600.
A motion to approve school committee meeting minutes for October 24, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Nieto, second by Ms. Syrek, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600.
Motion to approve the curriculum subcommittee meeting minutes for October 24, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Nieto, second by Ms. Syrek, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600.
And motion to approve the superintendent evaluation subcommittee meeting for October 28, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Nieto, second by Ms. Syrek, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600. Anything?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Nieto, second by Mrs. Galvin, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600. Thank you very much, have a good evening.